... and the instructions are long and arduous. They're meeting, but we are expecting that we have...
Thank you.
I hope you got it, Jennifer.
We're ready to go.
The attachment.
Yeah, Jennifer, Cameron's having some issues with the internet, so if you blitz out, tag, you're in.
I'm having the same problems Jennifer is having, it seems like. So between the two, we should be able to deal with it.
That's what I was about to say is, I'm having really bad... I'm having quite bad internet.
Me too.
If for some reason we lose both of you, we will just hang tight until we get you back.
Or carry on.
So we're ready to go, Chair?
Ready to start?
Yep. The video's rolling.
That's it.
Very good. I call the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, February 10th to order. Please do the roll call.
There we are, sorry about that. Chair Cameron Mesba.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennifer Willard. I think she's there. Okay. There we go. Erin Woods.
Here.
Briann Tosinski.
Here.
Rob Heberlin.
Here.
Terry Greenfield.
Here.
Olive Gallagher.
Here.
Thank you.
Very well. We all stand for the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Give me a moment. That's one thing I have not done yet is bring that up.
Uh-oh. For anything.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the states of America.
To the republic.
To the republic which stands one nation uncut, indivisible, with liberty objectives.
Citizens' input, I am told we don't have anybody wanting to have input. Should we recite the statement anyway, or...
Yes.
For their record, yes, you should.
Yes. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand so that we may hear from you now, and you raised your hand via Zoom so that our staff can recognize you and bring you into the conversation. I assume we still don't have anybody.
And that's correct.
Very good. Administrative matters is consideration of January 13th Planning Commission minutes. I have a bunch of pitly editing notes that I'm not sure is worth taking the commission's time for. It's stuff like "politics will dictate" instead of "politics will dictated", and things like that. It's just typos or editing comments throughout, but...
Criminalers' errors don't require any kind of action.
It doesn't. I just encourage Ms. Junior to, at the, once this is prepared, to do one last go over to catch some of these.
I'm a copywriter. I'm more than happy to help.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate you pointing that out, and we will definitely take a third or fourth ganter, actually.
Sounds good. I know it's dense, and so it's easy to not see stuff. Are there any changes or corrections or additions? I see a lot of shaking heads, and therefore the minutes are approved as submitted. Next item is work session, and I invite Ms. Bateshell to introduce the work and the staff that are going to be presenting. Take it over.
Thank you, Chair Mesba, commissioners. My name is Miranda Bateshell. I'm the Planning Director for the City of Wilsonville. And I, this will now be your third work session on the middle house, Wilsonville Middle Housing Project, which will leave before you tonight. It's the only work session you have tonight, and in part, that's because we have a lot that we need to work through for this project. And as you know, it can get detailed pretty quickly, involve a lot of conversation and tough decision-making. And this project is one that we are hoping to wrap up this summer and fall in preparation for future planning that we need to do and additional housing work that's come to us through House Bill 2001 and 2003. So this project doesn't need a lot of introduction, because you just discussed it last month, and I think remember the content fairly well. We're looking both at how to integrate changes from those state bills, but also how to integrate the newly adopted Wilsonville Equitable Housing Strategic Plan into this work that we're doing. So as we take a step back, and we look at policies and changes that we need to make to be more inclusive of middle housing in our single-family residential neighborhoods, is thinking about how to do that in a way that also achieves the objectives and the outcomes that are outlined in our Equitable Housing Strategic Plan. So last month, we started that conversation, particularly as it relates to Frog Pond West and some of our citing and design standards. That went to City Council on February 1st. Some of you may have tuned in for that and their conversation. I won't steal any of Mr. Polly's thunder on how that conversation went, although there was a brief summary in your staff report. So he's going to go over the discussion at City Council. He's going to go over what staff and the project team have been discussing since we last met with you and received your input and direction, how that's evolved or kind of taken a step forward into more detail. So we're going to go through that tonight with you and ask you some more tough policy questions and get your input in pushing us sort of further down the road in the direction that we'll be headed with these amendments. So with that introduction, I will introduce Daniel Polly, Planning Manager with the city, and I'll let him introduce the rest of the project team that is here with him this evening.
Thank you, Miranda, and good to see everyone again. So helping me out on this presentation this evening is Joe Dills from Angelo Planning Group, as well as Ben Weber from Sarah Architects. Also assisting us and available as needed is Kate Rogers with Angelo Planning Group. So really appreciate their participation tonight and their great professional support throughout this project. So Kate, if you want to go ahead and bring up presentation. And go ahead and go to the first slide. So tonight's work session is going to cover a number of topics that we'll step through. Again, it's our only work session tonight, so we have a lot on the plate, so yeah, we're eating off a platter tonight, not a little salad plate. So we're going to start by reviewing the desired project outcomes as reviewed by the council on February 1st. Then we'll jump back into the Frog Pond West concepts, followed by talking some detailed code around plan developments and the conforming, non-conforming status of existing planned unit developments. Then we'll introduce an important tool, talk about the citing and design cut sheets, which will be an important tool as we continue this, particularly with our public outreach following. And finally, we will focus in on our outreach plans and get your input on what's happening and what will be happening on the outreach plans. So next slide, please. So we're going to start again with the desired project outcomes. So go ahead and, next slide. So the outcomes that the council has indicated for this, and again, these came from a variety of sources, council goals, equity, Equitable Housing Strategic Plan, but then reconfirmed with council that these are really the project outcomes that they're looking for with this project. So first of all, is support of the city's vision of a thoughtful, inclusive, built environment. Next is, one of the more obvious, but I want to go a bit more into it, is complying with House Bill 2001 and the related administrative rules adopted by the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And as we speak about this compliance, it's important to understand the interplay with the House Bill 2001 compliance and the local policies and goals. It needs to be recognized that as we talk about the state compliance, that there are indeed local policies and goals that aim for the same and similar objectives. While without this state statute or rules, the details of how the city would meet their goals and policies may be a little different, but still, you know, there's a shared objective in the end here. So with that said, this is not just the state made us do it, but we need to acknowledge we do have adopted local policies and goals that aim for the same things that the state statute and rules are aiming for, in terms of meeting a variety of housing needs and other related policies. And so knowing that throughout the process, we may refer to local policies and goals and state requirements interchangeably. But again, whenever we're talking about state goals, the state mandates, et cetera, recognize that there's correlating local policies and goals that we're also working on at the same time. So there's the have-tos from a state compliance standpoint, but there's also the have-tos from a local policy around being inclusive and meeting the needs of a variety of households. So the next one is focusing on the opportunity for the development of more middle housing to meet the needs of housing needs of our diverse community. And then impactful public outreach to inform the middle housing design, particularly from historically marginalized communities. This includes specific outreach that's in process to the Latinx community that intersects with the ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion work the city's doing. So I'll talk a little bit more about this later. Next is relates to infrastructure, so really wanting to update our infrastructure plans as needed to support additional meeting middle housing production. This is in process as well. We won't talk about it in much detail tonight, but just letting you know, we're working to get consultants on board that are familiar with our infrastructure plans and run some modeling and see how these other changes affect infrastructure. And also, as part of that, we're going to look to understand options for infrastructure financing to relate it to middle housing. And next is to make sure that the standards that we come up with are not just on paper, but have a high likelihood by use by developers and property owners and can result in actual development of middle housing. And finally, a little about parking. We want to evaluate and update the parking strategies and policies to minimize parking congestion. And as a reminder, if you don't recall, or if those listening aren't familiar, the state does have specific limits to how many parking spaces we can require per unit, and that's limited to one per unit. For, so, but we can look at making sure that that parking that is provided to meet that minimum is available and used for parking versus for storage or other uses. Okay, next slide, please, Kate. So over the last couple work sessions, we've been working on the audit and have a couple, and we'll have more items to review with you tonight. But over the coming months, we will still bring some details and refinements of the code updates related to the audit. But we're at a point in the project, though, that we're, especially in regards to public outreach, that we will be shifting to and focusing more on the citing and design standards. And as we move into the citing and design standards, it's important to review key concepts. There's a couple related, but the main key concept about regulating housing that are shifting or being clarified as part of this process, and then what that means for everything we're doing. So go ahead, next slide, please, Kate. So a key area is this idea of how we categorize housing types. There is a notable shift there. And these categories are significant as they control things obviously about whether or not uses are allowed in certain areas, but also control which standards apply and which processes development needs to go through for approval. So many think of detached single family in one column and all other housing in another. So the shift is really that middle housing is now in the same column as detached single family. So knowing it is allowed, the discussion then shifts to what reasonable standards should we have as a community to ensure neighborhoods with a mix of housing types can maintain and improve their look, feel, and function? We need to assure that citing and design standards work for this redefined category one. So as many of you know, middle housing is often referred to as missing middle housing, as it has been categorized out or out of residential landscapes for a number of decades. And when it's recognized, it tends to be grouped with multifamily in the second category merely because there are multiple units on one parcel. However, even when we look at historical construction in Wilsonville and elsewhere, we see this middle housing, which again, for those that aren't as familiar with this term, when we talk middle housing, we're talking duplexes, which are two units on a lot. We're talking triplexes, which is three units on a lot. Quadplexes, which is four, as well as what are called townhouses, which is a term that the state uses to refer to attached units, that each unit's on its own lot, but they're attached. They share a common wall at the property line. They share a common wall at the property line. There's also a product type called cottage cluster that's specifically called out as part of middle housing via the state rules and statute, which refers to detached individual units, but they're smaller and centered around a common courtyard. So that's what we're really talking about here. So shifting all those into this category one. And so until the 50s and 60s, middle housing was found in most residential neighborhoods. So it could be really, it could be considered rather than a shift, that is a clarification or a formal acknowledgement of which category middle housing actually falls in. So I wanted to call out a couple of Wilsonville examples of middle housing, all of which are integrated next to detached single-family. So this includes attached homes around the golf course in Charbonneau, duplexes in Daydream Ranch, and I'll note that these have been built in different areas, eras of development in Wilsonville, from some of the earlier developments up to ones that are currently under construction. So you have the attached homes around the golf course in Charbonneau, duplexes in Daydream Ranch and along Montebello and Trinity Way, attached single-family homes and townhouses in Vilbo, and duplexes and attached single-family in Frog Pond West. So in putting this in kind of a broader context outside of Wilsonville and even outside of Oregon, a number of jurisdictions across the country have began to eliminate the concept of exclusively single-family detached zoning. Oregon is the first to do this on a statewide level, and it is important to recognize that the ability to designate an area as exclusively single-family detached homes is something that's now in the past. Attached-style single-family homes or multiple single-family homes on a single lot, again, this middle housing, is considered single-family and moving forward is required to be allowed in all residential neighborhoods with the same standards applied as single-family housing. This movement's driven by a number of things, particularly by the fact that traditional exclusively single-family neighborhoods have not been historically inclusive and have been actually used to exclude particularly people of color. The Fair Housing Act, as well as Oregon law, makes it clear that we cannot adopt policies excluding people from desirable neighborhoods. And excluding housing or housing types means excluding people. As a city, we're also directed by adopted policies that focus on inclusive and equity and are driven by community conversations that have been ongoing. So a key question again for this project is how can we be inclusive while maintaining the look, fill, and function of neighborhoods as expected from current and future residents? So next slide, please. So continuing that conversation, just wanted to show a couple drawing examples that are actually in our Old Town Design Standards that show duplexes in a similar form as single-family homes. They're really kind of show that notion that in terms of form and bulk, oftentimes middle housing is closer to single-family than it would be to like an apartment complex or the traditional multifamily. So next slide, please, Kate. So next on the agenda, we want to shift the discussion to Frog Pond West and that ongoing So as explained in the staff report, council leaned towards the option two, like Planning Commission. So the policy question tonight is then about further refining this option two. As a reminder, option two for Frog Pond West compliance is adding units to the maximum unit count of Frog Pond West to reach the, an eight-dwelling unit per acre minimum. A preference was expressed by the commission last meeting to add those as middle housing units, which makes sense for a number of reasons. In thinking through this change, it is important to remember that there are many elements of a master plan that contribute to achieving the vision for the neighborhood as depicted in this rendering that was on the cover of the Frog Pond West Master Plan. While land use and the types of housing allowed are, is part of it, equal or more important are the details regarding such things as frontage design, street trees, signs, transportation infrastructure and street cross-sections, parks and open space and trails, and architecture, including the siting and design standards for new homes. So while staying on this slide, let me shift to another related discussion point. I want to acknowledge that there is confusion about what flexibility is available for Frog Pond West. I wanted to make, take a minute to clarify some of that on the record, which will be helpful as you consider the policy questions before you. First, an important one is that the flexibility we're talking about with these different options is just during initial build-out. Once a lot is developed, it can be added to or redeveloped to any of the middle housing types because they are categorized, again, the same as single-family under the law. So any limitation on middle housing in Frog Pond West no longer apply once a parcel is developed. It's just during initial development. At that point, it'd be the same citywide, statewide allowance for middle housing that would apply. So conceptually, a developer could build an initial development with a plan to redevelop it in the short term as middle housing. So an example, which may be kind of exchange, but within potentially the realm of possibility, is a developer puts a modular home on a lot and then in short term redevelops it into a middle housing unit. So the next is really about what point I wanted to make is about what the state law is really focused on. It's about allowing middle housing. It's about the potential for someone to build middle housing if they want it. It's not requiring or setting a threshold for actual numbers being built. And in terms of this state rules language that really enable these options, by its very nature, this special language is about following the existing master plans. The process that this language was put in for is intended to honor the master plan. However, it requires changes because the Frog Pond West Master Plan doesn't currently meet some thresholds to remain, to take advantage of this language. So if no changes are made, then the default is the state's model code, allowing all middle housing types during initial development as well as subsequent redevelopment. The alternative that we've been discussing is that the city can modify the existing master plan to increase the allow density to at least eight dwelling units an acre. This is important as we need to ensure that we are clearly meeting standards for a couple reasons. You know, we've had some initial indications from DLCD staff, but we want to be clear and not have any question that we're in compliance, because again, if we're not in compliance, the default is the state's model code. So if we're not clearly in compliance, the state may deny or just say that you didn't meet the threshold to be in compliance, or even if the state says we are, if it's not clear enough, we may be sued by housing advocates, many of which the top attorneys around land use in the state are involved in this process and very much advocating for this change of housing classification. And so we need to be aware of that to make sure that we're doing an adequate job to mitigate any risk of defaulting to the model code. And so this is why we've really focused the conversation on leveraging middle housing requirements to get to the eight dwelling units to acre, to show that we're really meeting the intent of these rules and are able to keep the overall Frog Pond West master plan while being clear that we're complying with these new state rules and laws. So as noted earlier, this project is not discussed, I want to be again clear that we're not discussing allowing multifamily like apartments. We are only talking about allowance of middle housing, a number of which are allowed today in Frog Pond West, and we're envisioning for east and south. So over the next few slides, we'll step through each type of middle housing that's really discussed in the state law to explore how it may interact with the look and fill of Frog Pond West and keeping with the master plan that was adopted by the city in 2017. So with that, I also want to give, Joe has a lot of experience both with the Frog Pond Master Planning Process as well as a good familiarity with the state rules, so want to give him an opportunity to add some additional comment here.
Thank you, Dan, and hello, commissioners. Good to see you again. Joe Dills with Angelo Planning Group. I'll be brief here, just a point of emphasis on what, a few things that Dan has already said. The Frog Pond West Master Plan really does much more than guide the housing mix and the density for the area. It's a vision and a plan for a complete and livable neighborhood. So a walkable place, connected streets, as you can see from this illustration, streets that connect to paths, a green community, close to schools, parks, close to nature, quality architecture, regional trail along Beckman Creek, and even for the smart bus, transit served. So as we talk about numbers and the practicalities of how we meet the law for inserting more middle housing into this vision, keep that as a context of the overall and most important outcome. And I would add to that some words that came from the community itself. When we started the master plan, that Frog Pond is really an extension of Wilsonville. It's sort of a proud addition to the city, and so that's another quality. So I think we're going to move on to the map discussion next. Dan, am I correct on that?
Well, we're going to talk about the units and then we'll leave the map discussion. We've held that...
That's great. Why don't we go back to you and then I'll say a few words at the beginning of the map.
Okay, that sounds good. So we're going to go through each of these units. So I will, I will kind of introduce each unit type and give kind of some key points and ideas around it and as it relates to Frog Pond West. And then we'll bring up cut sheets that have been developed to kind of help visualize. And both Joe as well as Ben are available to offer additional comments there and answer any questions about these different unit types as we step through each one. So again, we're going to step through, kind of do this four times. We're going to start here with duplex and two-unit townhouses. Then we'll go talk about cottage clusters. We'll group, then we'll go to townhouses, and then we'll group triplexes and quadplexes together. So let's start here then with duplexes and two-unit townhouses. And this, I'm going to dive a bit down in the weeds because it's significant on some nuances on how different unit types are defined in, by the state. So there's established definitions, including for duplexes and townhouses. So and what that leads to is a two-unit, a two-side-by-side units could be defined as either a duplex or a townhouse, the exact same structure solely dependent on whether there's a property line separating each unit onto its own lot. So no property line, it's a duplex, it's two units on a lot. With a property line, there are townhomes, two units with a shared wall on their own lots. So currently Frog Pond West small lot sub-districts require 10% of units to be duplexes, and they're also allowed, they are in allowed use currently in all sub-districts. So early in the development of Frog Pond West, staff in the Development Review Board interpreted this duplex requirement to be inclusive of attached units on their own lots, which at the time we called attached single-family, rather than requiring duplexes to always be two units on the same lot. So to date, all construction and planning to meet this 10% requirement has been the two attached units on their own lots, which would meet the new state definition of townhouse rather than duplex. So really the kind of the question that I'd put to the commission is then knowing that these are so similar and there's interplay between these and kind of in the long, also note kind of as a side commentary here that currently in the legislature, there's actually a draft bill that would allow land divisions of middle housing, which even more make essentially duplexes and two-unit townhomes very similar, even though, so essentially it'd allow you to come in and do a land division of a duplex or a triplex. I won't go into that in great detail, and I'm not sure whether or not that bill will pass, but it's something that's being talked about and should be, you know, we should have in our back of our minds as future potential as we're talking through this. So with that all in mind, really the question I have for the commission is would it be prudent then to continue to include two-unit townhouses as an allowed use in addition to the required allowance of duplexes on all remaining undeveloped lots? Now, keep in mind, since the state views them differently right now, the initial allowance of two-unit townhouses would not need to be on every lot. And I will note that one of the differences between the two is that likely two-unit townhouses would be primarily ownership opportunities, while duplexes provide more rental opportunities, thus meaning different housing needs. But in terms of the structure and their place in the market, it's very similar. So does it make sense kind of as a default in starting to build essentially our portfolio of middle housing types to include two-unit townhouses?
Confess, I'm having a little bit of a difficulty hearing you, Dan, with your mask on, and I'm a mask wearer, but I'm really having a sound problem tonight. I think I wasn't the only one.
Yeah, thank you, Oliver.
So I'm trying to follow, but I admit either that or I just had a bad day, but I'm muddled right now.
Okay, I'm happy to go back and go over anything that there's questions about.
I'm just trying to understand the difference here. I really, I could not follow you language-wise when you were describing the difference between the duplexes versus the townhouses with a different property line.
I understood it. The difference is that the two-unit townhouses have a property line between each unit, even though they are attached.
In other words, the person could own one townhouse, another person could own another townhouse, even though they're connected.
Yes, and that's why Dan is saying that that is more an opportunity for ownership for each of the units, as opposed to a duplex where one of them could be owned, the other one would be rented. So potentially they are...
But they could both be rented too and owned by someone else, right?
That's true.
A duplex. So that's why I'm a little confused about why...
I find the nomenclature a little misleading, has been a little misleading to me because in fact, when I lived in the Philadelphia area, I lived in what are called their twins, which are attached houses on two, on separate lots, sharing a wall. I think that that actually technically would make it a townhouse in our nomenclature, even though my association with that term is a two-story vertical structure, usually narrow, and that's not necessarily what we're talking about here.
No, and in some cities, it's called a row house. So it's a little...
In Philadelphia.
Yeah, so I mean, you guys are hitting on the issue for those watching, Miranda Bateshall, Planning Director for the city, that in a lot of, including even in Wilsonville, to some degree, we've used these interchangeably, whether it's a duplex or two-townhouses attached in form, they are the same. If you are standing on the street and you look at them, there is no difference. And so in a lot of places, even if it is a two-unit townhouse by... And so in a lot of places, even if it is a two-unit townhouse by some code definition, may still call it a duplex.
Right, if you had a townhouse with a property line between it, one of them could be rented out and one of them could have the owner living in it too. So, now you've got really almost the same thing as you do with the definition of duplex, but it's a difference between where the property line is, correct?
Correct. So, the only reason this is becoming an issue isn't even how the city defines it. The reason why we're bringing it up and it's part of a question for you is that when the state adopted House Bill 2001 and the administrative rules that followed it, they very specifically define each of the middle housing types. So they provided a very specific definition for duplex, for triplex, for fourplex, et cetera. And for duplexes, it is defined as two units that are attached, well, attached or detached, I think is still questionable, but two units on a single lot. And so, we have often allowed flexibility to developers to either provide the two on one lot, or you could do the duplex and put a parcel line essentially down the middle with a zero lot line on that shared wall, and allow it to be sold as two townhomes, or one unit per lot, but in form, it is still in our mind a duplex.
A duplex.
However, we can't essentially call it a duplex anymore because it doesn't meet the definition of the state. So, this is really about whether or not, moving forward, this is very nuanced, we just want to have an understanding of what the Planning Commission would want us to continue to allow as we do increase the allowance, because we have to allow duplexes on every lot. So as we do that, do we also continue to allow two-unit townhouses in those areas that we've previously allowed them, essentially to meet that same definition even though it would be written as a separate definition because of the complexity with state law?
It is, just a difference. Hold on, Jerry. Commissioner Gallagher, did that answer your question, did it clarify?
It answered one question and it raises another, but yeah, fine.
Okay. Jerry?
Well, it's really, this is really a language game, and in my view of it, it makes, the distinction is unimportant. Really the distinction is whether each structure, whether or not attached, is on its own property. And I'm in favor of that. I think that offers much more flexibility into realtors, to builders, and to buyers. Wilsonville, actually, I'm not too clear about this, because I'm not sure whether it still exists, but Wilsonville has had, has added confusion in even talking, having a category of detached row. That has been allowed, and there are examples of it not far from where I live. But anyway, I'm definitely in favor of both types, detached, I mean, separate lots and shared lots.
Okay.
So, Miranda, let me just ask a quick question here. If I stand in front of a townhouse that has been built, two-unit townhouse, and right next to it is a duplex, I won't know the difference?
Yeah, that's real potential, yep.
Designed exactly the same, like you could, you know, I mean, obviously designed differently.
Right.
But if you have the same builder, the same design, you could have them look exactly the same, and you would have no idea whether it's defined as a duplex or a townhouse. It's just about how that line is drawn on the plat and how the land is being used.
Yeah, Kate, can you go ahead and go to the cut sheet for duplexes? There we go. So, I mean, yeah, that structure there could be either based on whether or not there's property line down the middle. And also looking at this, you could have the roof, you know, this kind of shows it as two units that look like separate units, but you can also design it where you have a shared kind of roof system where essentially it looks like one unit, like those examples from Old Town that I showed, and it'd be the same.
So, from my perspective, I don't have a problem with, you know, having the townhouses and the duplexes either way. To me, it allows for flexibility, and also for an individual who may not have a lot of money to be able to have ownership and say if they purchase a townhome, so I'm okay with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Tzuzinski?
Yeah, I have no problem with doing it both ways. I think it adds for a lot more flexibility, and purely from a renter's standpoint, they would, a duplex and a townhome would rent the same. Whoever owns it would obviously have a different type of ownership, but so that way, if we want to have renters, we can, if we want to be able to open the market a little bit more for lower-end homeowners, then we can have that too. And I would be a big proponent of having, allowing the townhouses.
Okay. Commissioner Heberline?
I'm in favor as well.
Very good. Commissioner Willard?
I'm in favor of both as well.
The only, I have a couple of questions. When I look at this, I look at this functionality. One of the functionalities of a duplex is in cases where you have multi-generational families living together in a kind of a compound. Duplex is more amenable to that because it's under one ownership. You don't have to buy several adjacent units and so forth. I agree that you could do that similarly, but duplex has typically been the way, the easy way of doing that. The other question though is, and that's to Ms. Bateshell, if I understand it correctly, the state wants to make sure that there are duplexes allowed on each lot based on setbacks and availability of space and so forth. And I also heard that the developers are moving towards the row house, the individually owner-owned attached units. Would that eventually run into a problem with the state because you technically, as far as the state is concerned, don't really have any duplexes because the preponderance of your potential development has gone to this kind of a row house approach? Dan could answer this too.
My understanding is that duplexes are allowed, are required to be allowed on every lot. There isn't necessarily the same requirement for townhomes, there's more, there's more citing and design standards that come into play with them. But in theory, I guess depending on your lot size, in theory, both can be allowed on any lot. The question, I guess, that comes into play here is whether or not it allows for the parcelization, which then changes it from one lot to two lot, and then inevitably, you've built the middle housing type, but then you don't end up with two on one lot. Is that, that's kind of what I'm hearing? So, um...
My question...
At the end of the day, the desire is for more middle housing, and either one is defined as middle housing, they're just different middle housing types.
I understand that, I just am not familiar enough with the mentality of the state legislature. If they are floating the idea that you should allow duplexes on every lot, and that has become an indicator or a metric, and five years down the line, they come and evaluate how many duplexes have been built, and they essentially find none have been built because all of the potential sites have gone to this approach of single unit attached with, on its own lot. Then if they're sticklers, they could say, well, this doesn't work, we need to push harder and do whatever. If they're looking for the intent, which is middle housing, and I agree with that, then they're going to be satisfied. And that's why I'm asking the question, is this going to be a picky-un kind of a thing later on that we're going to run into because we have not created, even though it's not required right now, created duplexes, which is what they're looking for?
My sense is probably not at that level. I don't get the sense that the state necessarily has a preference over which are built. We will be reporting out each year, it'll be, we already report out on housing constructed to the state, and we, that will now be more refined to different housing types, including middle housing types. I think the rationale for the duplex, and I wasn't necessarily one of the drafters, so I could be speaking out of turn, but my sense of being a part of the process is that it's because oftentimes duplexes don't look like this, right? Like in this version, we are talking specifically about duplexes that happen to look in function just like two row homes, that there's either a parcel line down the middle or not. But a lot of duplexes essentially are a single-family house with two different entrances, and they're either, it's either mirrored inside the structure, or it could be that it's a top story and a bottom story, or there's a lot of different variations of a duplex, which in its form often looks just like a single-family home. And so my sense of the intent behind that legislation was to really think about the fact that duplexes are really just a single-family home with two entrances, and so should be allowed on every lot. I don't think that initially the idea behind duplex, because townhouses was defined as a different middle housing type, I don't think the initial thought was that they would look just like this. But obviously that can happen, and so now we're also in this conversation relative to Frog Pond West, but we're also, the state is also having this conversation and trying to determine whether or not legislation that's being proposed is, will impact this definition of duplex and how it will impact that.
Very well. Then in that case, I'm not sure that I have any preference for one versus the other either, whatever works. I would hope that in our outreach, we check and make sure that they both function the same way for those who prefer multi-generational living. And typically, or traditionally, this has gone towards Latinx homeowners. Not necessarily the case anymore, kids are coming back, especially with economic issues and COVID and so forth. So, all kinds of families are probably going to start finding a preference for having this idea of one unit with two different entries, just to keep the different generations privacy and freedom. Let's just make sure that we are not overlooking that as a preference.
I think that's a good point.
I think, I think the challenge might be more, in my mind, it all comes down to the market demand, and none of this is forcing anything, and that's one of the downsides of the House bills, is it's not prescribing that these things are built, it's providing an opportunity for them to be built. And so whether it's a duplex or whether it's a row house is going to depend on what the market wants, and if there is enough market demand, then developers will build it.
Yeah, and I think there is an important nuance to Ms. Bates's question that might have gotten lost when I was providing additional context, which was, the first part, which I think we've heard from you, is that there's some desire to allow both. We don't need to require the two townhomes everywhere where a duplex is required. So duplexes are required to be allowed on every lot. We don't necessarily have to allow the two-unit townhomes are allowed on every lot like duplexes. We could treat them differently in the sense that, yes, we still want to allow them in Frog Pond West, but maybe we just allow them where they're currently allowed. And that, you know, we can talk about as you make your way through the rest of the discussion this evening and think about it a little bit more. There is that nuanced ability since this currently is not how the state defines duplex.
Yeah, so essentially...
By the way, would like to highlight or underscore something Commissioner Heberline just said, that this allows the flexibility for the market to respond, to respond to it. And what Dan said, and for those who are not in the weeds of planning, may have just asked without notice, is that single-family as an exclusive category is not a viable option anymore. And to people who have been in the planning field since the 70s, as planners, we have been implicit in creating exclusive communities by requiring single-family zoning. And the planning profession has come around to actually seeing that and admitting it. So, it's a huge deal now to open it up to this flexibility that allows to market, to the market actually responding to the need in every community and not having communities, and this is not about Wilsonville, because Wilsonville didn't do this, but there are whole communities across the country that specialize in single-family, high-price housing, and that's the way they are exclusive.
Often with gates around them.
Or without, it doesn't need to have a gate when you can't afford to get into that neighborhood, you know?
No, it's an economic gate.
So this is huge, and I want to, you know, underscore what Commissioner Heberline said, this is big, and it's not acceptable anywhere.
Thank you, Chair Mazza. So, in regards to kind of the question we're asking, we hear that, you know, as we look at which type of middle housing we're adding into the mix, in terms of getting to that eight dwelling units per acre, because of this nuance with duplexes, it sounds like there's initial support from the Planning Commission of including attached two-unit row townhouses in that mix as we strive to get to the eight dwelling units an acre. Kate, if you can go ahead and progress, let's go past the site plan and go to cottage clusters. I did, before I do that, wanted to see if there's any additional comments from Ben or Joe on the duplexes and two-unit townhouses.
No, I think we got good, clear direction on those and also the rationale, so appreciate the guidance from the Planning Commission.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is there an implication here that we're missing for lot size? It does not make sense to put an attached house on, a small attached house on a large Are we talking, are we talking about attached housing also in, on separate lots in our medium-sized neighborhood, medium-sized lot neighborhoods?
Well, we're talking duplexes in every type of neighborhood, so...
And we are testing the setbacks and the other development standards to sort of test fit, as we call it, to ensure that each of the lot-size sub-districts of Frog Pond and actually all the other zones of the city can work with the middle housing types that are being added as uses.
Did that answer the question, Jerry?
Not quite. I have, I have a vision in mind of building a small, relative to the lot size, a small attached house with a large yard.
Yeah, I think the market's going to tend to drive against that, because the land out there is not cheap.
Be a way to get a large yard.
Yeah. So let's, let's talk a bit about cottage clusters. So cottage clusters, this is again, this concept of small detached units that are grouped around a common courtyard. They're currently allowed in Frog Pond West. It's, it's not known to this point if, under the current rules, if, if any would be built. We've heard at least one property owner thinking about it. We've had some conversations with people looking at the viability of it. But we don't know at this point if, if, under the current master plan, if any would actually be built. And this is a interesting type of unit, because it really can provide a variety of small units, including single-level learning, single-level learning, single-level living, that's affordable to a variety of seniors in particular and, and provides a community to be around. So as this unit type is already a part of, and Kate, if you can go ahead and go to the, the rendering for this one. So as this unit type is already part of the adopted plan for Frog Pond West, adding a limited number of this unit type to get to the eight dwelling units per acre as kind of a bonus density could still be consistent with the master plan. Arguably, adding a density bonus for these units would even better encourage the implementation of this mix of housing envisioned in the master plan and help encourage this to actually be built to reflect the diversity of housing even, even discussed in the current master plan. So, and these can be two-story or one-story. The state law requires them not to exceed a 900 square foot footprint. So this is just one example of how a layout could look. So thoughts on including this in the mix as we, or adding additional unit capacity focused on this product type in Frog Pond West?
Dan, one thing I'm confused about is I thought you said that it's already allowed in Frog Pond West.
Correct, it is. So the difference that would happen is, so currently it's allowed, there's some restrictions, like it has, they're on individual lots and each lot has to be, still meet 80% of the otherwise minimum lot size. So that'd be a shift, but also each unit count towards, counts towards that density max. So if essentially you gave developers a density bonus saying, well, if you build 10, 10 cottage clusters, that doesn't, 10 cottage cluster units, that doesn't count towards your density max, then that would be a difference that would, could, would likely incentivize their development and help raise that overall density towards that eight dwelling units per acre.
Yeah, if I understand this correctly, you could have a cottage cluster as small as 450 square feet home, is that correct? Am I reading this correct?
Yeah, that's just an-
Okay, okay. So when I look at this, this cluster here, from my perspective, and, and thinking about the Frog Pond West area, I'm not sure if the cottage cluster lends itself well to that area. And in addition, I'm not sure, you know, how the current and even future residents would take to this. So I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure that a cottage cluster would be, would, would fit well within the Frog Pond West area.
Commissioner Woods, do you want to expand on that? What do you think is out of place in that neighborhood?
Just from the look of, you know, it looks, it's a cluster. And from my perspective, you know, you've got what, one-story, two-story type homes here. It just, in my opinion, doesn't, wouldn't lend itself well to the Frog Pond West arena. When we start talking about Frog Pond East and South, that's a different story, but I just don't think it lends itself well for the Frog Pond West development.
I would tend to agree with that.
Okay, I want you to keep in mind that, again, as we, especially as we start to talk about siding and design standards, we'll assume that the, a lot could be redeveloped. So if someone built us, had enough yard space in initial development, they could later come back and build a cottage cluster in the remaining yard.
Okay, thank you.
You know, my, my exposure to this locally is on Boons Ferry Road in Twolleton, I think it is. There is this kind of small unit development near the senior facility there on Boons Ferry. And it, it is the kind of facility that, or the kind of housing that seniors who are downsizing embrace. Now, the question in my mind is whether the other support facilities and so forth that are necessary for that kind of a use are gonna be available nearby in that neighborhood, which is kind of, that's why I was asking Commissioner Woods, what kind of things are missing there? I thought maybe he had some thoughts about functionality, but that's what I usually look for, is will it function properly for the audience that it is meant for?
In my mind, I think, I think it is technically feasible to make a cottage cluster that could blend in with the look and feel of the rest of the Frog Pond neighborhood. I think it comes, I'm still struggling, Dan, to be completely honest with, with if it's already allowed, what are we, what question are we trying to answer? And so I'm, I have not been able to figure that out yet. I don't, I don't know what it is, but I'm still struggling with, with what we're really trying to answer here.
Sure. So let me, let me just go-
Whether or not we need to, you know, provide incentives. What incentives again are you, Dan, talking about?
So it's twofold. So the, the changes would be, first of all, that you could build multiple on a single lot, where currently you still have to have them on their individual lots, there, you just get a reduced lot size if you group them around a courtyard. So there's, you really get rid of, under, under kind of the state standards, you get rid of that idea of a minimum lot size that currently exists in the Frog Pond West master plan. And then there's also that notion with, with a density bonus, or in long-term, after initial development, then they're, like, like the other middle housing types, they're exempt from density. So you can essentially add additional homes without counting towards your, your density maximum. And, you know, you, you can sell four or five homes for more money than you can sell one home.
Okay, so exempting from the density maximum. Okay, I got that. In terms of the property side of things, so i- if I, if I'm getting this right, and please correct me if I'm wrong, in its current form, a cottage cluster would be feasible on the large lots, the R10s, but would not be feasible on the R5 and the R7 because the lots are too small. What you're saying is that this would allow that in those, in those smaller lot sizes?
It's actually a little bit different. So, so I know Jerry's familiar with it, but on Canyon Creek Road, there's, and even in Vilbo, there's a number of kind of housing pods where you have detached, single-family that are on their own lots, but are around a common courtyard. And, and so that's really what the current allowance gets at. It's a similar product type, but, and those would tend to be in, actually the small lot sub-district, because you're going down to like, from a 4,000 square foot lot to like a 3,200 square foot lot in a cottage cluster, under current standards. Under, under, these, under the rules that, as defined by the state, you could take like a 14 or 10,000 square foot lot and put four, five, six units around that courtyard on that same lot. And even if the average lots, the lot area for each unit is below that 3,200 or whatever.
I've been a fan of the idea of cottage clusters, and the examples near where I live are, I, I find really quite, quite fine, quite okay. But what I'm finding a surprise here is the 450 square foot home. I, as I've thought of cottage clusters, I have not thought of anything that tiny, that smaller than we allow for ADUs. Where did the 450 square foot size come from? It's the first time I've become aware of this.
I can weigh in here for a moment, if you like.
Thanks, Ben.
I'm Ben Weber with Sarah Architects, responsible for these drawings, so I'll answer for them as well. That, that's a good question, and what you're seeing in this cottage cluster is admittedly a little bit of an amalgam of a variety of things that would be possible in a cottage cluster development. So we are trying to show, as a prototype, a range of small dwellings, like these 450 square foot, one-story, the 1,100 square foot, two-story. Both of those are possible. And as we've sort of discussed, you know, if, if market conditions, or generally sort of the developer's interest in the Frog Pond area, I kind of dictate that 450 square feet is probably too small to be an appealing product. There's definitely room in the development standards to build something larger. You might end up with fewer units on a lot, you know, that's the trade-off. But these standards do allow a very broad range, you know, of unit sizes are cottage. So think of the 450 square feet as an example, but not a rule.
The 900 square foot cluster footprint per cluster is a rule.
Correct, and that's just the footprint. And so of course you can go two stories, which gives you more space above that 900 footprint.
Sort of eliminates the whole idea of the word cottage, doesn't it? I mean, Dan, I remember when you first showed me some, some examples of, of cottage cluster. You showed me a very appealing example of one, that was actually cottages around the inner lawn and courtyard, and I found it very charming. I, I can think of a few examples I've seen around the city, in other parts, off of Shoals Ferry, I'm thinking of a, of a facility there actually for, for elders. But this doesn't look like a cottage to me. I mean, I, I just, I just find the whole idea of the density and, and the two-story, it just feels really unattractive, and maybe I'm, I apologize. I don't mean to offend you, Ben, on the drawing. It's our idea of cottage. I mean, it just, it just doesn't, it doesn't, certainly doesn't look to me like Frog Pond.
Oh, I understood.
As a broker, I, I don't know how I, I don't know how I'd sell that, certainly under that definition, and just-
So- Right, and, and just to clarify, what we've drawn here is to show what's allowed and possible under state rules. So that two, you know, the full two stories is allowed under state rules. As you're saying, it may not be appealing to potential buyers or within the real estate market. That's a whole other conversation.
So what I'm hearing you say, Ben, is this is not a site design for appealing to somebody. This is just a range of sizes that can fit on that lot-
Exactly.
-that you're, you're showing.
Yeah, testing different sizes, different parking configurations, so on.
So am I understanding correctly, Dan, that the incentive you're saying allows for cottage cluster to be owned under condominium ownership kind of a thing, instead of each on, on its own lot? Is that how it goes?
Yeah, so, and we've seen that sort of development in Wilsonville, where cottage cluster type development, they may be slightly over 900 square feet, but concept of, of detached units shrouded in a courtyard on common property and subsequent condo plot, and then each of those units is being sold as a condo unit. And I think I, I don't want to dwell on each of these too long, but, so what I'm hearing is, it sounds like we need some additional exploration on this unit and maybe how different siding and design standards could, could impact it in terms of, of, of working with the look, fill-in function of Frog Pond West. So, and, and that's fine. We can continue to explore it. We'll, we'll be asking about this during our public outreach. So for the time being, what I'm hearing is some uncertainty on whether or not this one is fully appropriate to, to include as, as an additional allowance. I mean, again, a long-term redevelopment, it is allowed, but in terms of putting it part of that initial group to get to that 121, or the 120, about 125 additional units is what we're looking for to get to eight dwelling units per acre. And we'll talk a bit more about those numbers in just, with Joe in just a minute as well.
And, and Dan, I would say, just for, from my own sake of clarity, it, when we revisit this in the future, maybe some examples might help to hammer home what is being, what is being proposed that is allowed versus isn't allowed in the current form, and what are we trying to get? What are you proposing that we can do here that is different than what is already allowed?
Okay.
What, what I was hearing, Dan, was two, two different comments, actually. One is what Commissioner Everline just underscored, you're looking at design standards. The other one Commissioner Woods brought up is, is this even appropriate in the neighborhood? And to me, that's a locational issue. If you can show where such a development would be appropriate in the neighborhood, it may address some of the concerns about how does this even fit in the neighborhood functionally?
I, I think, Chair Mesba, that's a fundamental question for the entire Frog Pond neighborhood. You know, is, is a duplex sitting next to a million and a half dollar home in the R10 area going to be something that the city and the residents want from this neighborhood? That's a fundamental challenge that we're going to need to figure out how to address.
To me, that has been addressed by the state, saying you will have that. I agree with you, but it's kind of out of our hand, it seems like. This one, though, it seems to have more of a, you know, where is this appropriate, that we have some say on, and the state hasn't mandated it.
Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out where that control area line is and where, where it is versus what the state mandate is and what we are proposing to allow.
One bit of feedback on, on this question, Chair, is that during the master planning process for Frog Pond, we did some site studies that looked at cottage clusters in the area close to Beckman Creek, understanding that those lots have some slopes, they have trees, and a property owner might have some portions of their property that are unbuildable, but an area where they want to cluster their allowable density. And so this, this particular form for laying out and site planning was, looked promising and was part of the rationale for including in the use list in the RN zone ultimately.
And I favored it at that time, still do.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Woods, you had your hand there?
Yeah, so even though it's, it's allowed, it's, it's not required, is that correct? I mean, yeah, so that's why I was bringing it up and, and thinking of the residents of that area, you know, currently- of that area, um you know, currently and for future. So um I, I just want us to, to think about that when we're looking at this. I am not against cottage clusters, I want that to be clear. I, I'm just not sure that um having a cottage cluster in that um area, uh since I live right by there, uh and know it well, if it would fit well and particularly um you know, with how it would, in my opinion, would look uh within that community.
Thank you.
All right, uh would it be all right if we moved on to the next product type?
Yes, it would be time.
Okay, so, so we talked about the two-unit townhouses, but we're, we also need to think about the three-plus unit townhouses. Uh so some things to think about here. So these are not currently allowed uh in Frog Pond West and looking back through the master plan comments, there was, you know, some developers did prefer it, it was a topic of discussion through the master planning process and in the end, uh the decision to allow even like a four unit and maybe Joe, after my comments, if you recollect anything else about that conversation, feel free to add it. Uh so, but three-plus unit townhouses are a product type that have been built extensively uh in Vilbo, as you're probably well aware, and have been well received in the market providing a less expensive new build ownership opportunity. Uh so they're significant in that sense. While some townhouse buildings could be similar in bulk to a larger single family home, they can be substantially larger, introducing a different urban form to Frog Pond West. So um do you want to go ahead and go to the drawing? Uh Kate? So again, this is, as Ben kind of alluded to, some of these drawings are essentially worst-case scenarios, testing the limits. So this isn't necessarily how it'd look and we'll describe later kind of the purpose of making the cut sheets, kind of these testing the limit type approaches. But that said, is there may be reasonable siding and design standards that could make a three or four unit uh townhouse more of the bulk and shape of a single family home. Uh so those could be explored. Uh and while some, do want to point out that also while some townhouse buildings even in Vilbo are two-story, they are often three-story from just being able to fit uh all the typical amenities in, in a given space. And uh based on experience uh in Vilbo and just kind of developer interest, which we'll be talking to them more about, these would likely be built if they were allowed in Frog Pond West. Uh it would be primarily ownership opportunities. And again, just want to reiterate that even if they're not allowed during initial construction, they could uh short order afterwards, someone could come back and redevelop a site or divide a home into uh into townhouses. So that is, uh wanted to get your thoughts on townhouses. Joe, I don't know if, or Ben, anything else to add?
Nothing from my perspective. The, the background uh in the master planning process really didn't zoom in on this as one of the choices. Um it was um, it was uh more about the overall density and preference for single family. Um so we, there was, we really didn't even get to this discussion uh as a part of the palette of uses. And then maybe one more thought, Dan, just picking up on, on uh, on the comment from Commissioner Everline. Uh the, the question here is, should this be added as one of the residential use types into uh the residential neighborhood zone in Frog Pond West?
Yeah, so it will be added for long term. It's just during, if it should be something we should focus on during initial build out.
Yeah, yeah, completely understand. And Joe, I would say in terms of my, my recollection of the Frog Pond Planning Task Force, the preference was single family detached housing.
Right.
In Frog Pond West. There was a huge push for single family detached housing. Personally, I, I would not be against the idea of townhouses, um multi, you know, three-plus townhouses. It comes back, back to that fundamental question of how serious is the city in having opportunities for diverse housing types? We can say no to this and still meet the intent of the law, but if we're really serious about having diverse housing types, then I would recommend that, that we include this as one of the options because it is one that will be built versus all of the other ones we've been talking about are not necessarily going to be built based on what Mr. Polly has said.
Yes, I have a, a comment.
Go ahead.
Uh I, I was not part of the Pond Master Plan Task Force, so I don't know this area as well as some of the other commissioners. And but I recall that there is no commercial enterprise, there's no commercial property um like there's in Vilbo, there's some commercial property in Vilbo. There is none envisioned in the Frog Pond West area, correct?
Correct, not in West.
Okay.
There is a site designated in East.
Okay. The, the multiple townhouse attached dwellings, to me, feels more appropriate in an area that has an adjacency to some kind of a commercial offering. And this seems like a very big, I tend to sway away from things that are a really big departure from the original intent of master plan. That tends to be my preference, to honor the planning process and keep the master plan intact where we can.
Any other thoughts?
Uh yeah, I, I would have to agree with that. Um once again, the, I know that we have these in Vilbo, but um you know, in thinking again about the Frog Pond West area, um I just don't see uh the level of townhomes unless uh the townhomes that we were looking at were um two-story and they, they really fit in well with the current homes there. But other than that, uh I would not, um I, I, I could not see having these townhomes um in that area and would not support, um certainly not a, a three-story town, townhome, three uh townhome complex.
Thank you. Jerry, did you start saying something?
Well, I, I was involved in that, I referred to it in our last meeting as the compromise, uh and it was a hard-fought compromise that uh eventually we, we did adopt for, for West. Uh I think that we're having, we, we are required by the state to back away from some of the terms of that compromise and I'm fine with that. Uh I was in favor of approaching West much more like we're approaching East. Uh in fact, I think logically that the two neighborhoods are just reversed from the way they ought to be. East ought to be where West is and West ought to be where East is. But uh that isn't the way it worked out. We were developing West first and those interests won. Uh but still, I think that keeping faith to the extent that we can within the law and within the spirit of our recent uh move toward equity inclusion in Wilsonville, uh I think that we're going far enough to accommodate those interests, those new newly emergent interests uh by just allowing more uh, I want to call them twins, duplexes and, and two-unit townhouses in West. I think that's going far enough.
Okay, Commissioner Tuzinski?
Yeah, I would agree with um what the last few commissioners said, uh Greensville, Wood and Willard. Uh I, I think this seems like something that we should put a lot more focus on once we get to East.
Definitely.
Especially, I think the market is going to want to build a lot of these and I think that that'll be a really great place for them to do it. I think it just doesn't fit with what we've already got planned right now.
Commissioner Gallagher?
I'm gonna tend to agree with what was just said. Um I just, I, I'm all for inclusion and um affordability, but I get, I just get the feeling, and again, I know I'm new and I've missed a great deal, but I just get the feeling that we're trying to put everything that's, that's possible into this one area and I'm not sure that that's going to give us a sense of integrity about a particular area. Um there's a, there's a place to have all these things and to meet all the requirements and to go beyond the requirements, but I just get the feeling we're using a shoehorn to try to put everything into Frog Pond West and I, I, I don't quite understand why we're doing that, so I'm a little, little confused right now.
Okay. Uh my, my own approach to all of these questions boils down to design functionality and uh inclusion is definitely an important element uh and needs to be thought through um with every, every decision and every step. However, it, it needs to also work. Uh this kind of a product to me uh is part of a walkable neighborhood and although we have not had success uh very much nationally in new developments with um its own commercial village center, that that quaint new urbanism uh seems to be something that died with our grandparents, uh unfortunately, because there ought to be a place for it. We ought to be able to support small local businesses that don't require driving to, in order to buy uh milk and other things or even catch a, a nice coffee. Uh it's not been particularly successful that I've seen and this requires that. This requires a kind of a town center, village center, kind of an environment. Vilbo has attempted it, we'll see how successful it's going to be there with their uh commercial center. Um on this part of uh this neighborhood not having anything like that, I don't see where this would properly function and fit. Uh and that's, I think, partly why people are thinking they're shoehorning it and that uh this doesn't seem to really resonate or harmonize with the rest of the concepts in that uh neighborhood. So um as much as I support what Commissioner Everline is saying in that we should really take all of these decisions seriously and make sure we're not short shrifting things, um I'm not seeing how we're gonna find a properly functioning implementation of this in this neighborhood. Perhaps instead of giving it up altogether, Dan, you could take a second look at the neighborhood and see if you can bring to our attention opportunities and possibilities that we were just not seeing and don't, don't know about. Uh I wasn't a part of planning for this, so I know even less than some of my colleagues here who were part of that process. Um and this abuses of, of what we are unable to see. Um that's my suggestion to you if you think there's an opportunity here that we are overlooking.
Yeah, I mean, we can explore to see if there's some reasonable siding and design standards that could keep the bulk of these more reasonable in Frog Pond West. We can explore that, but I am hearing the commissioners concerned that this, kind of the size and bulk of this sort of development would be, would be quite a change from what was understood for Frog Pond West, while the duplexes and two-unit ones would be less.
Can, can, can I raise some, can I ask a question or raise, raise an issue?
Go ahead.
I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna lay claim to this. I'm, this is not originally with me, but I was prompted to think about it by something that I've read and I think it was something that was, was um a suggestion that was made to the city council. I don't know, I may have read it in the paper. Um but it made me think about, you know, the whole idea of creating housing for people who have, have a lower income and are at a different stage in their life perhaps. They're not people who would be interested or able to buy a large luxury home on a single lot, but would love to come and live in our lovely community. And so the question becomes is, if you're planning a community, um for a person who's trying to get into the housing market or to even rent, um but maybe they don't even have a car, they want to use the smart system. They want to be in a place where they're closest to where all the other things you're talking about, the supermarket and the drugstore and everything. And so there's the center of Wilsonville where that is a, that kind of living is possible where you don't need a car, you could use transportation, you could walk to things. And it just seems to me that we're trying to put things into a neighborhood that's so far removed from all of that and it just, I don't know, to me, there's just, there's something off here and I don't know what it is, but I just need to, I needed to mention that because I thought that the idea by this couple uh was such a good idea. It was such a clear sense of if you want to create affordable housing and inclusion and diversity, um shouldn't the center of the town be where people like that can live, where they can walk around and do things and they could afford things? And then as you move out where people have more cars and they're bigger families? Doesn't that make sense?
It does.
Am I crazy here?
Well, let, let me make a couple.
I would say that East should be West and West should be East.
Yeah, well.
I mean, it just.
Let me be clear here.
I mean, I, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, let me address a couple of points there. First of all, when we're looking at a product like this, we're not talking about, like this, we're talking 300 to 400,000, maybe upwards to like around 500,000 price point. We're not talking about starter homes here. We're talking about things that someone making 70, 80,000 dollars a year may be able to start thinking about affording. We're not talking about, now someone that doesn't make six figures potentially being able to afford. We're not talking about something in the 100, 200,000 dollar range. So I think that's an important point to realize and so some of those households that you traditionally think would be living in that suburban, single-family development or may prefer uh that sort of development that's not attainable in this market, may choose to go to something like this. So and those people, I mean, we're talking our teachers, firefighters, um even our attorneys, you know, you're, we're talking people that are making good incomes looking for housing in addition that are priced out of these new neighborhoods as well. So I think it's important to realize that, that we're not just talking about, you know, a small group of, but as, but we need to include everybody in every neighborhood and that's really the idea behind this.
One of the things that uh keeps um coming up with inclusion is we keep focusing on income as part of an inclusion. That is, is one of the elements of uh inclusion in housing policy, but when we talk about a wide range of products, income is not the only thing we're looking at.
Lifestyle choices is too.
Yeah, lifestyle, you know, an individual.
Exactly.
Urban professional kind of a person who doesn't want a huge house, he doesn't want to have to deal with garden and yard and this, that and the other thing.
Exactly.
Ought to be able to get something like this that is private, that is not an apartment, that is their own thing and it could cost half a million dollars. That's fine, it's just that that's what they want at that point in their life.
All right, I think uh we've, we've appreciate the commissioners' thoughtful feedback on this and um and the bulk of these and we'll, we'll look at, you know, keep it open maybe uh depending on siding and design standards if there's something reasonable, but certainly here the concern about the compatibility uh with kind of the, the look and feel of the neighborhood, particularly for, for buildings this large, so. particularly for, for buildings this large, so, or potentially buildings this large. So let's go ahead and move forward to tri and quads. So similarly, these are not currently allowed in Frog Pond West, but will be allowed in the RN zone. So keep in mind, as we're writing the zoning districts, these will be allowed uses, and if they're not allowed uses during initial build-out, we'll need to clarify that in the code, but they will be listed as allowed uses in the zone because they are allowed for redevelopment. So triplexes and quadplexes have not been widely built in Wilsonville to date. However, they could be similar in size as a larger single-family homes. Indeed, larger single-family homes could easily be redeveloped as, as triplexes or quadplexes. I know of one situation not in Wilsonville where, you know, it was originally a, a kind of a standard three-bedroom, two-bath ranch. You know, over the years, an elderly parent came to, to live, and so they added on essentially an ADU, which was later expanded to the size to actually qualify as a duplex. And then that couple sold the house to one of their children and chose to live out their retirement in that duplex component of the house. And then later in life, one of their other children had some life changes and needed a place to stay, and ended up converting even another component of that home to another unit to support that family member. So it ended up, what was originally a three-bedroom, two-bath, one, one-car garage ranch home, ended up essentially being a triplex. So the, these are particularly a type of unit that, as market pressures really get there and families trying to live together, find a way to be near each other, make sure they're supporting each other, but also not living and sharing the same bathroom and kitchen, is something that can very organically happen. And that said, they can, they often can be as similar size as a larger single-family homes. There's potential to introduce larger buildings to a neighborhood, but existing setbacks and lot coverage would limit this. So the same setbacks and lot coverage that apply to a, a large single-family home would also apply to this type of unit. And it's unknown if any developers would choose to construct this type of unit in Frog Pond West. But they do have the potential to introduce ownership and rental opportunities that don't currently exist and can meet a variety of household needs, a variety of house, of, of, lifestyles and changes over a lifetime. And again, as all these, they would need to be allowed in the RN zone for future redevelopment. So we have one example of a triplex kind of pushing the envelope. Kate, if you wanna move to that. So this is, essentially you have a side of one of the houses with a porch facing the street, and then rather than having kind of a blank wall going back, you have the three entrances, entrances to the homes on one side, and then a driveway on the other that leads to the rear of the three houses. Kate, if you wanna go ahead and go to the site plan for this, so they can kind of see that as well. So interested on if, this may be a product type that we wanna include in that initial allowance for build-out to get to that eight units per acre. Similar questions to the other product types.
Any thoughts?
This seems similar, these examples seem similar to the, the row, the more than three or four townhomes to me. I, I feel like I have seen triplexes and quadplexes in, that don't fit this standard, that are, that are a little bit more like a cluster where there's entrances coming from east-west angles, but this particular example, I, I think I dislike for the same reasons that I dislike the, the prior, the prior one of townhomes.
I agree with that. And, and good examples, I think, can be found in Charbonneau.
Yes. So, but you're focusing at design as opposed to-
Functionality.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I have no problem with it at all. But, but the design can be done much more in harmony with single-family neighborhoods.
Agreed. Well, and, and, you know, the unfortunate thing is that, on the one hand, the intro said this looks like a single-family home, and all the standards of a single-family home, and you looked at it and it doesn't. The, the examples don't. So that's a problem. Again, this is a design thing, Dan, if you think this, we are overlooking something here, and you wanna be more specific about the design, that would be fine. What my, my own feeling about this is that we definitely should keep this as a possibility for expansions and redevelopment, because people's situation changes, as the examples that you brought, and we need to provide people the flexibility to do that with their property as their needs change. And I'm not sure if you start by building it, how many takers you're gonna have, because you're, you're now focusing on a niche kind of a market, and a handful of multi-generational buyers that may be interested in a, in a brand-new house or several units. I don't know what the market is allowed there for it. I, I just, I'm wondering that. But definitely should make sure that we have the flexibility to, to allow people to do this as their life situation changes in life. Any other thoughts, Commissioner Heberline?
Oh, why not? From a functionality perspective, I'm not sure I see any significant difference between this and, and the concept of the, the three-plus townhomes. I agree with the rest of the commissioners that the designs portrayed here don't lend themselves to, to the neighborhood. My, my challenge is, is I think maybe on, on this one, if, if there is no market for it, what is the point of putting the work into Frog Pond West to allow it?
I also, I have a question again. I feel like an idiot tonight, but it's, it's just been a day like that. Dan, I have a question.
Sure.
Is it my understanding that all of these possibilities will be available to anyone who owns a lot, and even if it was initially a single dwelling lot, that in the fut-, like if I owned a lot right now in Frog Pond West, and I decided a year or now I wanted to do something different, and I wanted to put two things on it, I could go ahead and do it?
Correct.
So in other words, it's not like there's a certain area of Frog Pond West where you have single homes, and then another area, there's a lot of triplex and duplex and quadplex?
Yeah, we're gonna talk a li-, a little bit more about, during initial build-out, about the, the area or grouping versus dispersing, but, you know, ultimately, as allowed uses, they're allowed on all lots. That said, you know, these sort of units, during even initial development, would be regulated that you could only put, like, as, as some key considerations here mark, like you could only put it on certain size of lots. Like you couldn't have put a triplex on a four thousand square foot lot, for example, or a quad on a four, four thousand square foot lot.
It could be anywhere, anywhere in the whole development. It wouldn't matter. It was strictly up to the person who owned the land.
Yeah, that's true of all these middle housing types.
Well, that's gonna be an interesting thing.
If it can be fit on the lot.
Got it.
Well, and that's where the importance of design standards comes in.
Exactly, yeah. Wow.
And yeah, so I mean-
Much like previous, I don't see, certainly in the current design that we have before us, I don't see how this would fit aesthetically, and, you know, just the look and feel there over in Frog Pond. So I do agree, though, that we should probably keep this as an option for future build-out for individuals, but it's not on the plan now. I just don't see it being a part of Frog Pond West.
So one question I'll put out there, kind of, I know you're responding to, and again, these examples are to test, are testing the limits, but if they're citing design standards that maybe look at, have these, think about citing or design standards that may have these look more like a s- single structure, rather than a row of structures that are attached, if that would change any feelings. So just keep those sort of que- we don't have to answer those tonight, but those are the sort of questions that we're going to need to work through as we think about citing and design standards.
Yes, Dan, those are the design standards I think everybody's coming up with. That's why Commissioner Greenfield is talking about, Charbonneau has these. When you look at them, they look like any other single-family house from the, from the streets. So yes, design standards are gonna be the important element here.
All right.
Are we ready to move on?
Yeah, so again, I just wanna reiterate that all of these will be allowed on redevelopment. So all of these are allowed uses in the zone. It's just a question of, during that initial build-out of the master plan, in order to get to that eight dwelling units per acre, what type of middle housing should that be focused on? So, so far what I've heard, let me just, as this is kind of the end of this part of the discussion, so far what I've heard is duplexes and attached, and attached two-unit townhouse sort of product, we recognize that it's going to be allowed, it's required to be allowed by the state, and that we can make that work. These others, where, there's more concern about how, all the rest of these, there's more concern about how they can fit into that, that kind of, the planned urban form of Frog Pond West. And so minus any real urban design or citing and design standards that really address those clearly, there'd be concern from the commissioners about initially including those. Would that be an accurate summary of what I'm hearing tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
I think so.
Okay, thank you. Kate, if we can go to the next slide. So we wanna, we've kind of touched on this briefly, but about how, so what you're going to add to the master plan, but where is the next question? The basic options would be to either focus in one or two sub-districts, or to provide the opportunity across all sub-districts where there are undeveloped or vacant lots. In support of the idea of integrating middle housing into neighborhoods, and keeping consistent with how duplexes are currently allowed throughout, and cottage cluster type housing are allowed throughout the master plan, the initial staff recommendation would be to spread any additional units throughout the planned area. And that also contributes to kind of a more subtle change, where it's not, you have suddenly this dense area that wasn't planned, but it's kind of more incorporated block by block in similarly sized bulk of buildings. I will go back to these kind of the state rules, really intend for the potential integration through each block and neighborhood, trying to group. So this idea of trying to group uses is counter to this. There was, kind of as Commissioner Gallagher was talking about, there was a lot of discussion through the rulemaking of, okay, shouldn't we put this in kind of this neighborhood, as long as kind of, let's say, this quadrant of the city allowed a certain level of middle housing, we could group it here or there. So that was a proposal that was put forward by a number of parties at the table during rulemaking. There was a lot of pushback against that, that really, the, the housing advocates and others really pushed back, saying, no, the idea is, there is no blocks or areas that are exclusively single-family. This apply, this is intended to, the intention of the bill is that this applies everywhere. Integration applies on every block. As long as certain components such as lot size for these, for like triplexes and quadplexes are met, there shouldn't really be any other qualifications. And so in the end, the rules really supported that idea. And so this idea that, and, in, in relation to that, eventually they're allowed everywhere. So it may make more sense as we're looking at adding them, a certain level of them during the initial build-out to be allowed, that those would also be integrated throughout, similar to what would be allowed in the end. So I know Joe had some other comments on this, so I'll, I'll let him share those at this point.
Just a, a little bit on the numerical side of this, and this was mentioned a little earlier in our meeting, but Frog Pond West, overall plan for a little over six and a half units per acre, five hundred and seventeen homes, I'm going from memory, I'll check back to my-
Five seventy-one.
But to get to the state requirement of eight units per acre, what we'd be adding to these sub-districts is about a hundred and twenty-five units over, and in the initial build, over the land that is undeveloped. And there's about a hundred acres left of the hundred and eighty acre area. So that's what we're looking at numerically. If the approach to spread, so to speak, these additional units amongst many sub-districts or all sub-districts, then you can picture that additional hundred and twenty-five units being over that remaining hundred acres. So I just wanted to give you a, a sense of how much, as you think about the where. The fundamental question here is, should we take kind of a spread, many sub-districts approach for additional allowance, or an approach that would select more individualized locations for middle housing?
And I would add-
For the former.
And I would add, you know, duplexes are allowed everywhere. So if we're really focusing in on the two-unit attached, then, you know, there's that component of it too.
Yeah.
Joe, can I ask a clarifying question real quick? So you had, you had stated that, that there is, so a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty acres total, and the current density is approximately six dwelling units per acre, and the state requirement is eight dwelling units per acre. But we only have a hundred acres left of the hundred and eighty that were originally in the develop, in the overall development.
Right.
Does that mean that the hundred acres that are left need to be at ten units per acre to meet the overall eight units per acre requirement?
Very rough numbers, yes. The remaining development would have a zoned capacity for up to about ten units per acre on this undeveloped acreage.
A zoned, a zoned capacity, but does not require that capacity to be developed?
Exactly, yes, doesn't. So that's, that's, think of it as the max and the min can be less.
Got it, okay, all right.
I think that the greater distribution is the better plan.
Any, any other thoughts? Commissioner Woods?
I have none.
Commissioner Dzizelski?
Um, I, I think I would tend to agree with Commissioner Greenfield, but I'm not su-, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Willard?
Yeah, I think that for, for diversity and inclusion, the dispersment of the housing types matters. So that would be my preference, but it's not a very strong preference, but it is a preference.
Commissioner Gallagher?
I'm ambivalent.
I'm ambivalent. Name of the day.
Well, with, with, with minimum house costs here in the range of half a million already to begin with, we're not talking about creating a slum in any case, but I still would, I'd like to shy away from having anything that could be identified as the lower income of this upper income neighborhood. I, I, I think that that kind of segregation by income is not an ideal that we should be pursuing.
Yeah, I, I like spreading it as well. It just creates variety in every block and every, every view.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Greenfield. My, my thought would be to spread it out as well, because I would hate to then have to make a decision and say, okay, R-10 doesn't need to, to have the potential for any of that density increase, but R-5 does, because it's already dense, so why not make it more dense? I, I don't want to go down that type of slope here at, at the city.
I would agree with that.
Okay. Is that enough of an answer, Mr. Polly?
Yes. And with that, that's the, really, the end of our Frog Pond West discussion for tonight. Was there any final comments or remarks? Thank you for, yeah, that was a big first course, so thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Do you want to, so we do have a few.
What is next?
We have a few more topics.
We have information all coming up then.
We have a couple more topics we did want to cover, that I think we will get through quite a bit quicker, I mean, that was a pretty, and this next one, existing planned development code concepts, I just, more than anything at this point, if there's any initial cons, ideas, I'm welcome the feedback, but I just want to call this out to the commission's attention as something that i, is fairly significant, and to, for them to be thinking about over the coming months as we continue to refine, refine our code changes. So, next page, please, Kate. So, this was tagged as an issue for further consideration even back when we did the town center plan process. And the development code audit we did also made this an important issue for middle housing compliance as well. It's really this question of what to do with existing planned unit development. So, the way the city's code work, most of Wilsonville is a planned unit development. And once you have that planned unit development approved, that really guides land use. So, even if the code changes underneath it, you're still looking at compliance with that planned unit development. And that includes in the residential sense such things as, as setbacks, lot coverage, allowed number of units, things like that. So, without effective way to address these past planned unit developments, the, the updated development code for middle housing would not apply to a vast majority of the existing single-family development, because their planned unit developments putting the city out of compliance with House Bill 2001. So, we touched on this briefly before, but again, specific attention is warranted to this particular code concept as it's key to state compliance, as well as it has ramifications for town center and other non-residential areas in Wilsonville where current development code now significantly differs from the planned development approvals. So, and you have this in your packet as attachment, I believe it was attachment two, if I'm correct? I didn't write it down.
It was in your executive summary, page four of twenty-four, or twenty-eight, where you summarized it, at the bottom of the page.
Yes, I didn't bring my staff report with me, so I need to bring it up on the computer to, but, go ahead and go to the next slide. And I just, with mindful of time, I'm happy to talk what we need to, but I just want to go through this pretty quick. So, really, what the concept that we've developed to this point is, is in locations where the development code has changed, we need to really change the status of existing, of these existing PUDs from what's called legal conforming, which means all the development, since it matches a PUD, is legal. If it burned down or got destroyed, it could be rebuilt even down the road, the same as it was destroyed. To what's called legal non-conforming, which is typical of a condition where something was built legally, but then subsequently the, the development, the zoning standards that apply change. So, this usually, there's a certain, how this works is, there's, I know Commissioner, you know, assessors particularly look at this, is, is when it's legal non-conforming, there's usually a, a time period, like 18 months, if you don't redevelop it in 18 months, you can't build it the same, and kind of your approval expires. Also means that if someone comes in with new development, then the new standards apply and not the old standards. So, so proposing a couple ways to shift from the legal conforming to the legal non-conforming for these PUDs that don't match current development standards. The first one is a threshold, where we identify 50% of the, more of the controlling citing and design standards are changed, then we should assume that that PUD is no longer conforming with the city's standards. And also, where this council is adopting an ordinance for new development codes, such as a town center code or, or this type of housing code, that part of that ordinance can be to designate existing PUDs in that zone as legal non-conforming. They could also do this, the proposal, they could also be this, do this as a standalone ordinance, if there's a particularly issue that's identified where a PUD's having issues and not conforming to city's visions that we, that the council could designate it as a legal non-conforming status. The other component of this, getting back to really something specific from House Bill 2001, is that regardless of any density maximums set in any of these PUDs, that those, that accessory dwelling units and middle housing would be exempt. And that's just purely simple to, to conform with the new state standards and not, and not, it's just a really technical fix to make sure that every residential in, of Wilsonville is conforming to those new state standards. So, I'll leave it at that, happy to answer any questions or take any initial comments that the commissioners have about this fairly significant part of standards that we're looking to update based on the audit.
Any questions or comments? If not, I think we are ready to move on.
Out, so next is really, we want to introduce you, we, you've seen the cut sheets, but I wanted Ben to really kind of introduce them as a tool, and why they are what they are, and how, and to lead into how they're going to be used in the outreach. So, again, we'll try to keep this fairly brief, but just wanted to show you these and get your input, because pretty quickly here later this month, we're going to be using these in our public outreach. So, go ahead, Ben. If you wanted, kind of click through the cut sheets, or Kate, if you want to click through some.
Yeah, we can go on to the next image. All right, so, you've of course seen a preview of some of these cut sheets for a couple of these different housing types, and I think we'll be pretty quick here, but you should know that right now, we have six different cut sheet sets, and those are all available in your package for deeper scrutiny. But we'll be using these in community conversations and developer outreach over the next couple weeks, as a way of talking about some of the development outcomes, and development standards and design standard considerations that are still very fluid as part of this process. I think that's a key word, that those standards are fluid, and so accordingly, these cut sheets that, that represent those design outcomes are also fluid, and will certainly be changing. So, sort of a quick user's guide to how these are composed on page one of each of these, and I should point out that of those six, we're trying to capture each middle housing type once. So, we have duplex attached, duplex detached, triplex, quadplex, townhouse, and cottage cluster as our groupings. So, in this duplex attached version, as you've seen, this is just one possible configuration for two dwellings on a single parcel with associated parking, one design configuration for that. We use these example photos to highlight, you know, particular features of duplexes, whether it's garage and parking location, entrances, considerations on corner lots, all of those are at play here. And then, the text up on the image, it's just intended to give some of the very basic sort of program information about what we've designed. So, like in this case, 1,400 square foot home, that's just this prototype, that is not a requirement for a duplex. There's a much wider range, you know, of potential size and design outcomes that could happen on this. So, we can go to the next slide. We just continue on here, a few more examples, and then a site plan to show some of those particulars about setbacks, and some of the details on lot dimensions, and then these key considerations. I think that's a really important place for you all to start reading these cut sheets, as well as folks that we go and conduct outreach with, you know, these are some of the key topics related to HB 2001 compliance that we have to acknowledge, as well as other changes to standards that we're considering to try to make these products more feasible within Wilsonville, as well as more compatible in the variety of zones that you have today. And then, the next slide, something we haven't talked about yet today, but we're using these as a way of cataloging zoning information. So, this obviously does not look like Wilsonville zoning code right now, but everything in black is basically copied and pasted content from your zoning code. We just reformatted it to put all of the relevant standards on one sheet for easy comparison. So, know that the black text, you know, is recognizable from your current code, and then the red text are updates that need to be made for that code to become HB 2001 compliant. So, you'll see near the top, minimum lot size, there are those minimum lot size requirements that vary based on which middle housing type we're talking about. Same thing goes for setbacks, garages. For each of these cut sheets, you know, there's a different use of this red text for the ways that, that various zones have to come into compliance. I should also note, and it's listed here in the top left, we designed the duplex attached specifically under the RN, R-5 small lot sub-district standards. So, we brought that degree of specificity to the cut sheet. So, a duplex detached in a different zone, you know, might have somewhat different outcomes. And we'll end up getting into all of that in the next couple of months, mostly through updating these standards tables, and probably a little bit less on, on designing actual products. We're not going to make a cut sheet for every possible permutation. So, that's kind of the user's guide to go through these. Dan, I don't know if you want me to go through the remaining five, or sort of allow planning commissioners to go through those on their own, either, certainly some of you have before or after this meeting.
I would say if you have any kind of general comments on the layout and usability of the cut sheets, that we'd entertain those, and then, I think from there, we can just click through each of these and kind of show you the initial grouping of the type of units that we're highlighting. Again, I'd, again, call your attention to the fact that we're kind of doing the push-to-envelope type test to really lead a conversation about, okay, this is kind of the maximum a developer might want to feasibly do, then what should we then think about to, to, to ensure that the design is, best fits into existing and planned neighborhoods? So, any feedback on kind of the initial layout or content of these cut sheets?
Um, I'll, I'll jump in, I guess, real quick. I, I think the, the general concept of the cut sheet and providing, you know, details is, is good. Mr. Polly, I did have a question, since we're on the, one of my favorite subjects, a detached duplex. I thought we had, I thought you guys had come up with a better name for this, and if so, is there a plan to put that onto this instead of having it as a detached duplex?
We certainly can, and maybe kind of in even smaller print, parentheses, detached duplex. Because that's what, so we want to call it by that term, two-unit cluster housing, and introduce that term to the community, but also for tracking purposes, and just to be clear, we want to also make sure we're referencing what the state calls it. But, yeah, I think we can improve that title, and I'll make a note to work with the team to do that.
For clarification, Dan, the, the state does call it the duplex detached?
It, it, it requires cities to allow the attached, but allows them to allow the detached as well.
No, I was asking what the state calls.
It calls it a detached duplex, under, under state law.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering.
And no, the nomenclature is coming to us as a given.
Yes, though we, you know, the, the notion we're, we're thinking about now is we can call it something else in, under our definitions, and then, in the definition reference, that it's a detached duplex under state law.
All right, so this particular duplex detached is a configuration in which there's an existing home on a fairly large lot, 1300, 13,000 square feet in this instance, and it's the addition of the second unit. So, that white building in the back is the new second unit that is definitional, definitionally the duplex. And I know if labels weren't on this, you'd be thinking ADU, accessory dwelling unit, as would I. So, this does create some of that nuance where the duplex, you know, among other standards, is allowed to be larger than an ADU, and is subject to parking requirements, and some other development standards that can end up being a bit more strict than ADUs. So, this is a defined product that could be executed in this way. A detached duplex could also be a lot like that attached duplex we just looked at, but with the air gap between the buildings, so without that common wall. So, that's another configuration that, that's very possible, and probably a lot more likely as a new build. We can keep marching through here.
March through these.
And just to note, this detached duplex is built under the R residential zone standards, as you'll see in the next slide. So, here's that table, again, with the red, compliance updates, and the green underlines for some of the feasibility recommendations. It's those green underlines in particular that are very fluid, and represent our initial recommendations to help improve feasibility, but the conversations we're having tonight, and with community members and developers in the coming weeks, are really going to help shape sort of the viability of those recommendations. shape sort of the viability of those recommendations. Keep marching on here. So quickly, we have triplex attached, which you've seen, quadplex, which is after this, and then the attached townhomes. And these are all built using recommendations from the PDR3 zone. So we felt it was reasonable to test all three of those products using PDR3. And then finally, I think the cottage cluster comes up again, same structure, and we bring this back to the table. So this is then at the RN, it's a Frog Pond, but it's the R10 large lot sub district. And you can see some of the red lines that we're proposing there. So that's the meat of the cut sheets at this point and we'll be taking those out for community conversations and through the outreach plans that I think are next up for discussion.
Any comments before we jump into outreach plans, give you a brief summary of those?
No comments? No? Just going?
So next slide, please, Kate.
So Dan, I'll pick up here on the outreach plan. The chart you're looking at is our total project from where we started last October to the adoption of these code and master plan amendments that is not set as a firm date, but we expect will be early fall or in the fall. And so across all of this, we've got sort of three types of outreach that will be done. There's the public information side, which uses multiple ways of providing information to the community. If you've looked at Let's Talk Wilsonville lately, you'll see a middle housing page that's been created for that. We've had our first publication in the Boons Ferry Messenger. There are fact sheets and cities' social media platforms are all different venues. So public information and trying to provide many different ways that people can reach it. And then the community meetings side of the outreach is in two calendar times at this point. You'll see the little cluster of blue people. This is the first there between February and March is our upcoming outreach and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But then we expect that there will be a second wave of outreach to the same stakeholder groups in the summer after the planning commission has finished its initial work, you know, in about the May timeframe. There is a reporting deadline to the state of having worked through these amendments by the, check me on this, Dan, by the end of May or in June?
End of May.
About that timeframe?
Yeah.
End of May. But that is not an adoption requirement. It just is a get your work ready to adopt and the city can have a community outreach process and inputs and modifications to its draft code amendments that follows that. But I did want to point that out for you. And then there's a sort of an overlay on this that is oriented to outreach to the Latinx community. It's an effort that is separate but coordinated with this where the city is working as contracted with Central Cultural and will be undertaking a broader community discussion about housing in general, but also using that opportunity to talk about middle housing. And Dan can fill in those elements here in a moment. But let me just finish up by talking about some of the outreach meetings coming up in February. We have quite a number of stakeholder groups. So the current organization is that there'll be discussions with the Frog Pond developers who are active in Frog Pond and then the property owners that have also been active in the pre-application conference and are moving towards development proposals. That will be done in a series of sort of small group, one-on-one type settings with each of those individuals and their firms. Then there are some more general community meeting opportunities that will allow the adjacent neighborhood associations to the Frog Pond area, but really also anywhere in the city to get some information about the middle housing project. There'll be something specific to Old Town. And then we want to organize a stakeholder meeting with developers who may not be active in Wilsonville now, but know about this housing and have some experience with it. So more of your nonprofit developers and/or those for-profit developers that are in the middle housing market. So the scheduling of outreach meetings is underway right now and when we have all of that firmed up, we can share it with you. As a general notion, we'd love to just have you listen in as you can to those meetings. They'll be virtual, of course, as everything is now. And we also wanted to put out the idea that if we could recruit time from individual commissioners to make sure that they make at least one of these meetings, I think you'll find it interesting and hearing things firsthand and it'll certainly be interested, helpful to the team to have you hear things. And then as we come back, working together in the planning commission meetings, we can have the dialogue with benefit of that. So that's an overview of all the outreach and kind of how it fits on the calendar. Dan, anything you want to add either to the overview or what's coming up specifically in February and early March?
Sure. Kate, if you can go to the next slide. So I, you know, in a way, a lot of the discussion tonight, while it'll be formatted a bit different, it really gets at what we're trying to get out of these community meetings. So the level of support of different middle housing types, kind of similar to like we talked through for Frog Pond, using the cut sheets. So that's one item we're planning. Talk through concerns about middle housing and kind of what is, why they are and kind of help the community think through and work through some of that, recognizing that this is coming, right? It's, there's the reasons why it is coming. Then knowing that it's coming, how then to make middle housing successful? What are these citing and design standards that can make it most successful? And then we do have a focus group, stakeholder meetings specifically with the Old Town neighbors that will be talking about, talking through those zoning options that we touched on a couple of meetings ago. So just wanted, if commissioners had any comments in general on this initial wave of outreach, ideas or comments on the questions and kind of the information that we're trying to get from the community during this initial outreach?
Dan, it looks like, you know, in reading the documents, that you guys are casting a pretty wide net to try to get as many of our residents involved. And I'm particularly interested in the Latinx engagements that you will have. I'm sure that, or I assume that, of course, you'll have, there will be bilingual, excuse me, there will be individuals there that will be able to support the individuals that are not that great on English, speaking in Spanish. I think that'll be an important part. But in looking at what you're in the process of doing, it looks like you're casting a pretty wide net to try to get as much information and feedback from the residents as possible.
Thank you. And I'll touch a bit in some more details on Latin.
Go ahead, Dan.
So let me kind of follow through on the Latinx component. If you can go to the next slide, please. So separate from these general community meetings, we are doing specific focus groups. We have three planned at this point, which will be actually Saturday afternoons in Spanish. And there's already been recruitment that Central Cultural has been doing and already has a full slate of participants signed up for the March, for Saturday in March to talk through the middle housing and these design components and the sort of housing that this group would be looking for in a Wilsonville context. There's also, so we'll be doing those focus groups. There's Spanish language surveys that'll be circulated and this is all, we're really grateful for the partnership we have with Central Cultural. They're doing a great job of really helping us reach the Latinx community in a way that we really haven't been able to. We've done some great work through, I don't want to diminish that, you know, we've done some great work building some great partnerships, particularly with Town Center, with local businesses and schools and working through businesses and schools. But this is even additional opportunities to really engage with this community and get their input and on this particular question and help them get engaged in kind of broader questions in the community.
Okay. One of the clarifications I had is this outreach is going to be distinct separate from the, any engagement we do on the Frog Pond West and how we integrate middle housing into Frog Pond West, correct? This is separate?
The Latinx outreach?
No, the, just the outreach in general. I was just thinking of the prior slide.
Yeah. So there's some of the outreach that is more general. There is quite a bit of outreach that's specifically focused on the Frog Pond West question. This includes working with the developers that have options, that have options on property or actively working with property owners and property owners that they're working with to really talk about, okay, if we did this or that, what's your level of interest or feasibility of these different things we're thinking? We're also going to have, kind of the general community meeting will be heavily advertised towards the Frog Pond area and cover a lot of that Frog Pond questions as well as it is an important question. And we're also in discussions with other developers, affordable housing developers and such, so also be a focus on, okay, you know, there's the existing neighborhoods, but also, but also let's talk about Frog Pond West. So yeah, Frog Pond West will be a focus through much of the engagement as there are some key questions there, but it's not the only component. We're going to talk about it on a broader city scale as well.
Okay. The reason I asked is I suspect that the community's response to Frog Pond West will be more conservative than it would be for newly, not yet master planned communities. And so separating those two or giving it an opportunity for input for Frog Pond West separate from in general, what is your feedback, is it going to be important because people can express their preferences for Frog Pond West aside from anything else?
Thank you.
Along with the Latinx community area, are there any other outreaches to any other diversity groups?
Well, I mean, this outreach is meant to cast a broad net. This was based on data and the growth of the Latinx community was one component of this. As identified in the Equable Housing Strategic Plan, was one focus that we applied for grant funds from Metro and received to really do this particular component of outreach.
Dan, this may be too technical or philosophical of a question for 8:30 at night, but how do we ensure that the outreach to the Latinx community has the same weight as the outreach to maybe the rest of the community or to the very vocal part of the community that is looking for something very specific? How do we, how do you balance that and make sure that all of the voices are being heard with the same weight?
Great question. I mean, certainly just kind of on the basics is we'll, I mean, they'll all be part of the data that's brought forward to the planning commission and council in making their decisions and we'll be sure to highlight those components. And on a project team level, we're certainly going to integrate all of that equally and, you know, there'll certainly be some decision points. If we get to a point where we're hearing opposite things, we'll need to have a discussion with you all about that. But yeah, I mean, the intent of this Latinx outreach is for it to have a real impact on this project, a real tangible impact. And that was kind of a focus of the grant request that we actually wrote. Because these weren't voices that were, that have been historically well represented in the community conversations. And in terms of also kind of addressing Commissioner Gallagher's question, as many of you are aware, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee that is being worked on at the city, we've already, Mariana Valenzuela, who's our contact with Central Cultural, has already engaged with Bill De Silva, the consultant that's working with our DEI work. And so we're doing our best to coordinate those. And so as, you know, that, we're not sure of the exact timeframe that the DEI commissioner committee is getting started, but certainly conversations around these issues there will also come up and be part of and be integrated into the process as much as possible as And certainly we expect that that committee will be set up. Again, we don't know exactly how it'll look or how we can integrate it. I don't have enough details, but I'd hope that as it's set up, that we can bring these discussions to them on a timeframe well before the commission and the council's making
Willard, do you want me to take over?
Do I want to take over?
You want me to take over?
Yes, please.
You had to.
Sorry, yes, please.
Is that it, Dan?
That is, what, you want me to add something else tonight? No, just kidding. No, that's it.
Why not?
So I really appreciate, you know, we had a fairly open agenda tonight and there's a lot to get through on this topic and there's a lot more coming on other topics the next few months. So I really appreciate the commission sticking with the project team to get through a lot this evening and really have some meaningful conversation. I really appreciate the effort and sticking with it. So, and also appreciate Coy and his consultant team being patient with us as we get through this tonight.
We appreciate the work that's going into this and as you can tell, Dan, we're not making it any easier. So keep the good work up. All right. Are we ready to go to the transportation performance evaluation?
Yes, I believe we are. And I, given how late we are running behind for this item, I will keep the introduction short and sweet. I'm not sure if Coyley is on the call as well, but I believe both Coyley, our Development Engineering Manager, as well as Scott Manzer from DKS and Associates are both here tonight to go over the Wilsonville Transportation Performance Report. It's an update. We, when we did the last major TSP overhaul, after that, we started doing performance reports where we go back and we look at the investments we said we'd make and, and looking about how that compares to the performance of the system overall and reporting that information out for the community. But, but really importantly for the Planning Commission and the City Council as well, since the number of our decisions that we make impact our transportation system. So with that, the, the recent update was completed and I invited them here to share the latest information with all of you so that you would have that as we move forward on other projects. So I'm not sure who's taking it away, but team, please take it away.
All right. Thank you, Miranda. My name is Coyley. I'm the Development Engineering Manager. With me tonight are our consultant from DKS. And as Miranda mentioned, we want to share some important data and finding from the report that we conducted this year on the performance of the transportation system. We, Wilsonville is very active in monitoring and evaluation, evaluation, the transportation system to and track how well our efforts, our planning effort to, on the design outcome for the transportation. So with that, I'm not gonna go further into detail. I will let our consultant take over the presentation and go over with you guys information that we, we, we file during the conduction of the report. Scott, you can take away.
Thank you, Coy. You know, I'm Scott Manzer with DKS Associates. I'm just excited to present to you. Thank you Chair Messbaugh and the Planning Commission for taking part. I just want to make sure, can you see my screen okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. All right. So I'm gonna go through, Coy did a great job kind of presenting kind of the, the purpose. The agenda is we're, I'm gonna share a little bit about the Wilsonville Performance, Transportation Performance Report. Talk a little bit about the goals and kind of the update. This was, this is an update to a 2016 plan that was prepared and presented to the Council back in 2016. And so this is an update just showing kind of how the city is keeping up with the transportation system and meeting kind of the goals and objectives that were identified in the transportation plan. And I'll talk a little bit about our next steps. So kind of the purpose of the Performance Monitoring Report, again, is to help, as Miranda had shared, it's really intended to, to monitor how transportation planning and engineering efforts are going and just making sure that the goals that are identified in the city's transportation system plan are, that are meeting the desired outcomes of the projects that are being constructed and implemented in the plans that are being put in place. Also to make sure that progress is being made towards the seven transportation goals. And another important component, which is one of the reasons this, this whole process was created was to monitor some of the, the regional transportation growth and not to let things that are happening outside of Wilsonville catch up, catch up with us and not be on the forefront of knowing what's happening with development and traffic growth outside of Wilsonville that's impacting Wilsonville streets. So one of the important reasons for the Performance Monitoring Report is Wilsonville's growth. And as you can see from this figure, Wilsonville's been growing at an average population growth of about 2.8% per year, which is significantly higher than the averages of Washington County and Clackamas County. You can see from 2004 to 2019, the population's grown from little, almost 17,000 up to nearly 26,000. And with the additional population comes the need for additional services for transit, pedestrian and bikes, motor vehicles. And so that's kind of the, the reason that we want to monitor and make sure as the city grows, that we're keeping up with the transportation infrastructure needed to provide safe travel and also a reliable system. So these are the seven transportation goals from the city's TSP that were used to create the measures and the objectives for the Transportation Performance Monitoring Report. The first goal was related to safety and that's kind of the measure was fatal and serious injury collisions, connected and accessible. Do we have a system within Wilsonville that works for all modes of travel, whether you want to ride your bike or walk or take transit? Do you have connectivity to all the, the origins and destinations within the city? Is the system functional and reliable? Looking at intersections and average delay per vehicle, looking at travel time reliability from one end of the city to the other, looking at freight. Wilsonville has a significant amount of industrial users and is the truck traffic and the freight traffic reliable for those users? Looking, is it cost effective? Looking at pavement conditions and is the city keeping up with the needs for pavement infrastructure? Is the system compatible? Meaning from cross sections, are we providing the needed urban upgrades and sidewalks and trails to meet the city's standard cross sections for arterials and collectors and local streets within the city? We wanted the system to be robust, to have a strong transportation mode share using alternative modes of travel. And also finally, the last goal promotes livability. We want the citizens of Wilsonville to use the transportation system and have the, the services that they want to feel like it. Not only one is a livable system and a livable community, but also provides, you know, healthy choices if they desire for the transportation network. Any questions so far before I go into the goals?
Any.
Okay. All right. I'll keep going. So the first goal was related to safety and we use the ODOT traffic safety data for our evaluation and the objective. And, and the goal is to eliminate traffic fatalities and serious injury crashes on city streets. And serious injuries in this definition would be debilitating injuries, injuries that really change a person's standard of life and impact and would create impacts to families. So we want to really continue to, I mean, our goal is to have no fatal or serious injury crashes on Wilsonville streets. And as we've been monitoring, and I think the city's been doing a lot of great things to improve, to provide safe transportation measures and modes, whether it's adding a trail system or adding buffered bike lanes. We want that system and we want a lot of different alternatives that are safe options. And so in our past report in 2016, the safety evaluation showed the city had about 2.9 fatal and serious injury crashes per year. And in the current data that we looked at between 2014 and 2018, that went slightly down to 2.5 fatal and serious injury crashes per year. And it's less than half of the statewide average per population for similar communities. So Wilsonville's transportation system is much safer than, than most communities in Oregon. But again, I would, I'm not going to feel good about that, that safety measure until that is zero fatal and serious injury crashes. And so kind of the recommended actions from our plan is to continue implementing the, the city TSP projects that are going to improve safety. And many of those projects would focus on safe routes of school, buffered bike lanes, protected bike lanes, enhanced crossings, and making sure that we have sidewalk infill in areas where there's gaps in the system. Our next goal is multimodal connectivity. I say this is an area, the city has been doing a phenomenal job of making sure that, I know when we, we talked to the Wilsonville City Council, there was a real desire to have neighborhoods connected for all modes of travel, for transit, bikes, pedestrians, and also having good connectivity for motor vehicles. And this is just showing kind of the, the desire for multimodal access to uses like parks, schools, employment centers, retail areas, and the surrounding regions. And we just identified some of the, the great connectivity projects that the city's been implementing. I mean, of all the, the communities that I work in as a consultant, the city is doing, is probably, City of Wilsonville's doing the best job of, of making those multimodal connections. And the exciting thing is you can see some that are identified on this figure, but the city's also has planned for the, the Town Center I-5 pedestrian bridge, as well as the Fifth to Kinsman connection that will provide a bicycle pedestrian connection from Old Town. And so there's still a lot of exciting projects to come to improve the multimodal connectivity. And so our recommended action is for the city to continue with sidewalk infill and bike lane connections consistent with what, what's been happening over the years. And we'll see a better connected system 20 years from down the road. Goal three is related to functional and reliable. And this had the several measures, but the one we, that I'm presenting on today is just the focus of intersection operations and making sure as that growth and the population in Wilsonville continues to increase, that the, that the traffic system can keep up and we have a reliable system. And there are areas that congestion is continuing to increase, but the, the good news is for the 11 key intersections that we evaluated in the study, all those intersections currently meet the city's Level Service D standard. And so as we continue to, to look at future traffic volumes through the development process and from regional growth and growth as Frog Pond and Villebois continue to build and occupy units, that the infrastructure that is being built and we continue to do the transportation planning needed to, to provide adequate operations and reliable travel times for, for residents and businesses within Wilsonville. Some of the things that we identified as recommended actions for a functional reliable system is to, to upgrade, upgrade many of the traffic signals within the city to newer controllers that can provide improved signal timing. There's a lot of what are called intelligent transportation system components that can be added to just help the system work better without having to build additional lanes. And so those are some of the things that, that the city's working with Clackamas County to implement some of those measures on, on the city infrastructure. Goal four is related to cost effective and just wanting to make sure that we're maintaining a good pavement, pavement conditions for the residents of, of Wilsonville. One of the things you can see that this is one area that the city is trying to keep up with, as, this is from the city's annual pavement maintenance evaluation. You can see good is a ranking of 90 to 100. Fair is 80 to 89. And as you look at kind of the monitoring of, of the city streets and how they're continuing, the city's really having a hard time trying to keep up with the arterial cross sections. And over the past few years, they've been getting, getting ahead on, on collectors. And this is just one of those components that the, that the city can work with the public to kind of identify what are the key areas that need to be addressed and the key concerns of the residents. When, when we're, we're looking at the National Citizen Survey, one of the questions that they're asked, and I put a little clip in here, is street repairs. And how do you feel that, that this is how the citizens feel the city's doing on keeping up with street repairs? And you can see between 2014 now to 2018, they feel like that's one of the areas that is, that they're not as pleased with kind of the progress. And so we were, the recommended actions is to work with Public Works to, to come up with an action plan to, to identify kind of the public's high priority roadways that they want to see improvements on and getting those improvements completed, as well as working with private developments as the, as the developments are, are implementing to try and come up with a cost effective way to repair streets as part of private development. And that, that caution sharing the intergovernmental agreements with private developments in the city, just to get the better bang for the buck for the city's funds to, to make sure we're repairing and providing safe and, and smooth streets for residents. I have three more goals and I'll continue to try and get through this quickly for you. Cross section compliance, and this is just wanting to, to assure that the city's multimodal network is, is adequately designed with the intent of what the, the city plans show for cross sections for streets. And you can see some recent streets that were upgraded. Two's Road was upgraded to minor arterial standards. Graham's Ferry was upgraded to a minor arterial. Kinsman Road, the Kinsman Road extension was, was upgraded to collector standards. But there's still many more streets. As you can see, this example on Parkway Avenue or Brown Road where there's gaps of sidewalk and bicycle infrastructure that's, that's needed. And so those are some of the streets that have been identified in the TSP for urban upgrades. And our recommended action is just to continue identifying funding to, to bring many of the city's streets up to current standards and to provide those urban upgrades to have the, the pedestrian and bicycle amenities needed for the, the neighborhood connectivity that's desired by the community. Goal six is the transportation mode share and just having a, a well-connected system and just having transportation choices that are available to all residents, whether you live in any location within the city. And this is coming again from the, the National Citizen Survey of kind of their, their opinion of the transportation system. And you can see the, you know, overall, they're, the, the community feels like the things are, are maintaining or getting better when it comes to, to modes. One of the things that has been dropping that SMART is looking into is some of the transit ridership. And one thing to note is all of the transportation data that we used in this study was taken in 2019 prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. So a lot of the, fortunately, the data that we're using was kind of before we, right now, we're seeing anywhere from a 10 to 15% reduction of peak hour traffic volumes because of the pandemic. So fortunately, the data we used is kind of pre-pandemic. And then as, as things get back to normal, those traffic volumes will slowly come back to, to, to normal, although we may never, ever see the, the same normal. We'll probably start seeing a lot more work from home and it'll be interesting to see what happens with traffic volume levels in the next several years as, as things change and get back to normal. And some of the recommended actions from the transportation mode shares, continue to support SMART and exploring, improving data collection and just looking at, trying to improve the mode share in Wilsonville and getting more people on transit, walking and biking and taking some of those healthier options that are available to them. Also to continue to build the multimodal transit improvements and filling the gaps in the network connectivity within the city. And then the final, final goal is related to positive citizen survey response. This is just taking the, some of the data provided from the residents of, of Wilsonville and what is their take on the transportation facilities. And probably one of the best things we saw in that survey was related to the, kind of the overall built environment. And, and you're seeing that the residents of Wilsonville are, are liking the, the transportation improvements they're seeing from the Canyon Creek Extension that was recently built between Town Center Loop and, and Beckman to the, many of the connectivity and, and road and pathway completions within Villebois. They're, they're seeing the, the investments in the system and seeing those amenities and appreciating those options that they have now. And another thing that we saw too is just the general perception of personal health and it's continuing to maintain. And people are seeing that they feel like the, the Wilsonville is a healthy community and the transportation system is a, is definitely a component to that, that perception of personal health. But again, continuing to, our, our recommended actions are to, you know, guide funding decisions to really identify projects that matter to citizens and prioritizing those projects. And also, one of the things that we, we've learned too is a lot, a lot of times, the infrastructure and the pathways and some of the bicycle improvements that are being completed, a lot of people don't know about that. And so also continuing to implement social media and news campaigns to really promote active transportation and really kind of encourage and let people know about improvements that are made and, and encourage people to try those out. And so my final slide is our, kind of our next step is to, to share the results of this update to the City Council on March 10th. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Commissioner Everline, you had a correction?
Oh, yeah, I sure did.
Oh, yeah, I sure did. Scott, on Slide 6 and 8, your roadmap showed Advanced Road being listed on east of Canyon Creek. And just wanted to clarify that it's not Advanced Road until we get to the Stafford Road intersection.
Yeah, I'm sorry, let's see, so Slide 6, so this is Slide 6 here?
Yep.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, you're right. So, this is Beckman Road up to Stafford, and then it switches to Advanced.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize for that typo.
Yeah, that's all right. And then, one quick question on this one. So, I noticed that the, there were a cluster of Injury A collisions at that Beckman and Canyon Creek Road intersection. Is there any, any information around that that would identify whether a signalized intersection would have mitigated those injury events?
Yeah, I'll, I believe that, and there is a plan for a signal there, and the city is excited to install a signal at that location. The problem is there, the city is also designing the bridge structure to the east. And any work that would be done at this intersection would end up, because of the grades and how that structure is going to be built, we couldn't install the signal at that time. It ended up being all throwaway. So, the intent is to, when that, that structure is built, is to install a signal at that time.
Okay, yeah, it's unfortunate, the timing for that. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yeah, but the always stop is still as safe, I mean, it's still a safe option. I can look at that data and maybe provide a little bit. I believe there was, one of those was a, someone running a stop sign. It's been a few months since I looked at that data, so I need to kind of remind myself. And I think another one was, was just related to one of the accesses there on the curve.
Ah, okay, yeah, something the Council might ask about.
Yeah, thank you, I'll be, yeah, I did notice that cluster as well and looked into it, and I can look into that a little bit more. But I do, in the TSP, there is a TSP project identified for a future signal at that location. And then, did you have a question on another slide?
No, it was just both Slides 6 and 8 had the Advanced Road identification in the wrong place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. No questions? Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, and good night.
Very good. Your packet had City Council Action Minutes and upcoming work program for the upcoming months. Any questions from staff on any of those? Any comments? Ms. Baychill, do you have any announcements or last-minute heads-up?
All right, I didn't see my video pop up, so I wasn't sure if I was actually on. Thank you, Chair Messba, Commissioners. I do not have any additional announcements for you this evening.
Ms. Pinyard is asking whether or not I have my edits. I can, I can drop it off at the City Hall for you, and you can... I could do that too if I, I'm reading your chat remarks. I can send it to you by scanning it. If that works better, that's fine. I can scan and send.
If it's not, if it's that complicated, no. I just thought maybe you had something at the ready that I would be able to review quickly. But, no, no, that's okay, I don't, I don't want to bother you any more than that. I appreciate the thought.
It's no bother, I can just scan it and attach to an email to you, and you can get to it whenever you have.
That would be most appreciated, I, thank you so much.
Chair Messba, this is Tammy Verstra. You're also welcome to drop it by City Hall if it's on your way, and I can scan it and send it up to Paula as well. So, we're here to help.
Thank you very much. You're more than helpful. I don't know where we would be without staff support. Any Commissioners, any last remarks? Any last things before we adjourn?
I guess, real quick, I was, as we were going through this and waiting for the Transportation Performance Evaluation, we always tend to, I hate to say, short the informational sessions, but we tend to spend a heck of a lot of time on the work sessions, and we tend to get to the end and are pretty well-done. And so, I'm wondering if there's short ones on the informational, if there's times where it would make sense to swap the order so that we can provide some energy to those informational sessions instead of devoting all of it to the, to the work session?
I appreciate that, Commissioner Havillane. I fell into the trap of, we've always done agendas this way, and it's typically always the order of public hearing, work session, informational. And I don't know that there's any reason why. And in how things unfolded this evening, I have already sent an email to Mr. Lay and Mr. Manzer to say thank you for their patience in sitting through two and a half hours of work session to give a 15-minute presentation. So, I do have the power in the agenda setting. We will always continue to do public hearings first because the public will be in attendance. But we can definitely split up the informational items so that those types of presentations do not get lost at the end. We would be happy to do that.
And if you put those work sessions at the end, then we'll all run out of steam, maybe it'll be shorter.
Let's try it. We don't necessarily want that. Let's try it, why not?
We are all on mute, so nobody's going to hear the snoring occasionally.
I strongly agree with that, and thank you, Ron, for bringing it up.
Very good idea. Excellent. In that case, is there a motion for adjournment?
A motion, we adjourn.
Thank you very much. Thank you, we have motion second, and it's been a wonderful night, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
And it is 9:07 for the minutes.
Bye-bye, Emma. Emma, say bye-bye. Goodnight.